So I'm gonna do something just a little bit different and ask you, uh, City Clerk, will you call the roar this time?
Mayor McLennan.
Present.
City Attorney Stevenson. City Treasurer Suter. Councilmember Bruce.
Here.
Councilmember Cat.
Here.
Councilmember Crum.
Here.
Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Hope. Councilmember Muhammad.
Present.
Councilmember Hutchinson.
Here.
Councilmember Monday.
Here.
Councilmember Murray.
Here.
Councilmember Wheeler.
Here.
Down out of 10 persons.
About down out of 10 persons. We have a call. I'm gonna ask Ms. Helen Harris to give us our prayer. And I got some special request that I'm asking her to do as well. We're gonna follow with Councilman Crum with our pledge. And then I'll ask you all to continue standing for Ms. Ashley Wingfield as she come and gives our national anthem.
Lord, I come before you this afternoon, oh God. With heavy hearts and uplifting heads. Lord, we have had so much tragedy, but we thank you right now, oh God. We ask a special request prior to this evening, God, to lift this family up, the Hoover family. Susan Ward Jones, oh God. Deborah Ferguson, State Representative. And Dr. Hushman. Lord, we ask you to lift these peoples up, oh God. And you look on this Hoover family and the 12 others, Lord, that was killed, oh God. And Lord, we ask you to bless them, rock them in the cradle of your love right now, oh God. Comfort their hearts, oh God, as they go through this, oh God. Lord, we lift you up in this building right now. Touch each and every one of us, from the crown of our head to the sole of our feet. Wrap us, oh God, cover us, God, lift us, oh God. Encourage each and every one, because we all have some type of problem. And we thank you right now, oh God, for your loving kindness and your tender mercy. Lord, we give you glory right now. We give you honor and we give you praise, because it's in your name, oh God, that we live, we move, and have our being. And we thank you right now, God, because you don't make no mistakes. We give you glory right now. We give you honor. We give you praise, oh God. Saturate this place with your presence, God. Let your love abide and heal, God. Lord, you rock right now, God. Let your spirit dwell, oh God. Let your love abide, oh God. Cover us with your blood. Lift us with your love. Wrap us in your mercy, oh God. Glory to your name, Jesus. Look on the city of West Memphis as a whole, God. And we thank you right now, God, for your glory, God, because it shall be revealed. We give you honor. We give you praise, because it's in your name, oh God, that we live, we move, and have our being. We thank you, God. We thank you, oh God. And we praise you, oh God. And we lift you up, oh God. Whatever's in us, oh God, Lord, you bless, oh God. And whatever we lacking, God, you fill it, oh God. Cover us right now, God. Give us that love that run from heart to heart and breast to breast, oh God. If we have anything we shouldn't be, take it out, oh God. Fill us more with your love. Fill us more with your word, oh God. Wrap us up tight, God. Lord, we thank you right now. We give you glory. We give you honor. And we give you praise, oh God. Because it's in Jesus' name, Lord, that we live and move and have our being. And we thank you right now, God. Amen and praise God.
Let us face the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands. One nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, see, can you see? By the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed as the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight o'er the red pines we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave for the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Good afternoon, everyone. Justin.
Testin, thank you. Today is a very special day for the city of West Memphis as we honor some amazing people. Today, we want to honor an individual first that gave the ultimate sacrifice for our rights and what we believe in, as well as helping others abroad. On August 26th, on 26th, there was 100 Afghans who lost their lives, but over 13 amazing Americans who gave their life for our freedom. And I want to thank them first, but after I do that, is one that's very special to this city that belongs to us. Marine Corps Lance David Espinzo. Marine Corps Sergeant Nicole Gee. Army Staff Sergeant Ryan Connis. Marine Corps Captain Hunter Lopez. Marine Corps Lance Capital Riley McCollum. Marine Corps Lance Captain Daylin R. Marala. Marine Corps Lance Capital Kareem Nikula. Marine Corps Captain Daygun William Tyler. Marine Corps Sergeant Johnny Rosario. Marine Corps Capital Humberto Sanchez. Marine Corps Lance Capital Jared Smith. Navy Hospital Corps Max Survey. And our special agent, West Memphis own. Marine Corps Staff Sergeant Darren Taylor Hoover. Will you all pause for a moment of silence for all who have lost their life? Thank you. I'm gonna at this time ask if there are any veterans or active military, will you please stand at this time? Sergeant Hoover was one of the 13 heroes who was killed by a suicide bomber attack at the Kabul Airport Thursday, August 26th during the final evacuation efforts of our U.S. military. They made the ultimate sacrifice in service while saving the lives of others. Sergeant Hoover was one of the 13 heroes who made the ultimate sacrifice in service of our highest American ideals while saving the lives of others. Their bravery and their selfishness. His bravery and selfishness will never be forgotten. And we want to thank him because Mr. Hoover was born right here in West Memphis. They lived here until they moved off. And it's so important that at this time that we honor and thank all of you, the ones who served this country, the one who fought, the one who we have lost, and the ones who are actively serving. On behalf of the city of West Memphis and this council body, I'm sure I can stand here and say thank you from the bottom of our hearts. On behalf of this remarkable individual, I'm gonna call, is Ms. Kelly Burnett, well, I know she's here. Will you come forward, please? Is Mr. Hoover here? Or he's not? Come for me, man. I'm gonna ask Councilman Crum and City Clerk Poynter, will you all help me in doing this honor for these two? Ms. Burnett, we can't repay your son for his actions act for the service of our country. And it's the city and it's the mayor, when I found out about it, I knew it was so important that we do something to recognize him and honor him, because many people don't do what he do. But I'm standing here with two men who have been and served in wars. And many people that are here that have served in wars and understand what it is to be selfish of your own life to make sure that you save people that sometimes it's not as appreciated at you if they should be. And I just want to say thank you. And West Memphis thanks him because he was ours. I know he moved away to Utah, but he was ours. And you being his mother and you his heart, you are hard. Now, you have a family right here that's gonna make sure we keep our arms wrapped around you. And I have a couple of things that I want to do. First of all, I have a resolution and it reads, "West, the executive branch of the city of West Memphis would like to give a special salute to USMC Staff Sergeant Darren Taylor Hoover of the United States Marine Corps, our hero. A native of West Memphis who gave his life for his country, saving countless numbers of lives while serving in Afghanistan. Whereas Staff Sergeant Darren Taylor Hoover was born July 24th, 1990. His parents, Darren and Kelly Burnett Hoover, were residing in West Memphis at that time. The family referred to him as Taylor. Taylor was 11 years old when the event of 9/11 occurred, and that is when he decided he wanted to serve in the military, understanding the injustice and the outrage that day. Whereas Staff Sergeant Darren Taylor Hoover joined the Marines in 2010 and became a warrior and a hero at a very young age. He was a Marine serving in the United States Marine Corps. A branch of the service referred as the Maritime Land Force Service branch of the United States Armed Forces, who dedicated his life for the well-being of the people in this city, state, and nation, and other countries around the world. Whereas Sergeant, Staff Sergeant Darren Taylor Hoover loved the Marine Corps and was deployed 9/20 of 11 through 4/11/12 and 9/17/13 through 12/19/13 to Afghanistan and 5/14/17 through 11/14/17 in Okawana, 31st Marine Expedition Unit and 5/15/19 through 11/8/19 to Okawana Unit Deployment Program and 4/3/21, current Afghanistan Operation Inherent Resolve Special Purposes Crisis Response and Main Ground Task Force. Sergeant Darren, Staff Sergeant Darren Taylor Hoover leads to mourn his homegrown, a host of family members and friends. It's without so much honor as Maryland, West Memphis, and this legislative body to now proclaim August 26th, 2021 as Sergeant Darren Taylor Hoover Day here in the city of West Memphis for the life for eternity. And we would encourage the people of West Memphis to give him that honor on this day. Thank you. Oh, also, we're going to do something that the city of West Memphis has never done. We're on the process of right now again, a memorial sign prepared in his honor in memory of Sergeant, Staff Sergeant Darren Taylor Hoover that will hang on Missouri Street so far the next 100 years. When you ride down that street, you will see his name on that street as he been honored. Let me thank you. Now, I have a pledge from the city of West Memphis and the United States flag that Councilman Crum and City Clerk Poynter will present to you.
Leave it up to my son to put me in these situation. I'm very shy. This is definitely an honor. Even though we did move when Taylor was little, we always would come back here. My whole family's here. They live, all of them. And he had quite a few adventures here. He loved Arkansas. It was, it was always like Christmas, even if we came back. And, you know, the heat of July was always like Christmas to my kids to come back here. And, and now we are back here. I appreciate everyone on this council, mayor, of course, and everyone in the city. And I'm sure Taylor is smiling down today. And I just want everyone to know that, yes, he was a Marine. He was a hero, but he was such a good Christian person. He loved so much. And I'll share something with you and then I'll get off of here. But we would talk a lot, and of course, as a mom, I was worried. He had been over outside of Iran since April. And when this crisis happened, he was called to Afghanistan. And I didn't know until the day before he went to Afghanistan that he was going. He didn't know either, I don't think. But I told him, we always said that we're not gonna say goodbye and we're not going to, we're not going to get all mushy and all that while he's over there, because he needed to stay strong. And we always did that, all of his appointments. But I told him that I wanted him to get home safe, get his men home safe. But I wanted him to get as many people out of there as he possibly could. And that's what he did. I'm very proud of him. And he did his job. And I know that he loved his country after his family. He loved his country so very much. And I just wanted you to know that, that he was there to take care of others and to get as many out. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burnett. Our city would definitely continue praying for this family. I know you have some times in the funeral ceremony you soon have to get ready for, but I just want you to know our city of West Memphis is behind you and supporting you in anything that we can do. And like I say, I mean, I sometimes get a little emotional during these times because, you know, someone lost their life for my freedom. And it means so much to them. It really does. So once again, I want to say thank you all to the Hoover family. And we will continue to honor him from this time on. God bless you all. Yes, yes, ma'am.
I would just like to say, I'm very sorry. My name is Lorraine Muhammad, city councilperson. And I am Muslim. And there are good Muslims and good Christians. And in my Islamic study, it said that when a person gives their lives and their sacrifice is this, they go straight to Jannah, a paradise. There's no waiting around. So I just wanted to comfort you with those words, that your son is already wrapped up in the bosom of the Lord. So be competent in knowing that. I just wanted to share that with you.
Thank you. I have two more remarkable individuals that I need to honor right now. When COVID came to the city of West Memphis, we was pretty much lost like the rest of the country. There was a new virus that was coming through the city. But we had two individuals who definitely stepped up to the plate to help to educate us, teach us, treat us with the latest medicine, and to move our city forward. One individual, once we started doing testing, drive-through testing, she offered her whole clinic to be assistance to us when we did them at the school arena. She used her whole team. She didn't ask for nothing. She just said she want to be a help to this community. And not just now. The individual I'm talking about is Dr. Susan Ward Jones. She have always been a blessing to this community with her medicine and her whole staff for helping our community. And I just want to tell her officially, thank you and the whole East Arkansas Family Health Center for everything they have done for us during this time. I hear you said something so remarkable. Last year, almost 700,000 people died from COVID. More people died from COVID than cancer. And she made an example that was so powerful. And we need to do everything that we can to make sure that we take the proper precautions to be safe. And what she have done for the city to make sure that our city move forward, I can't thank her enough. And I just want to take this time to honor a great individual. I know a husband, he okay, son pretty good. But Dr. Susan Ward Jones, will you come forward, please? Well, we want to honor you with this mellow, just to show our appreciation, to show you how much we thank you. Thank you for the leadership that you have given to our city to move our city forward and help us during this pandemic. I know we all didn't know about it when it first started, but now we getting educated and we doing so much better about it. I just want to tell you, thank you, all of you before this council. And I'm sure the city of West Memphis, both the legislative body as well as the executive body, we on the same page for saying thank you. And we appreciate you. And we look forward to you helping to move us forward in the future.
Thank you, ma'am.
You know, when I came here about 25 years ago, I would have never imagined that we would be in the place that we are now. And it has been such an honor and a privilege to serve this city and this county and all the counties that we serve. And I always surprised when someone notices what we do or even what I do, because this is just a mandate from God. I am doing what he has truly told me to do. So on behalf of the board and the staff, and I should have known something was up with the staff today. And our son, I just left him. But on behalf of the board and the staff and the patients of East Arkansas Family Health Center, we really do count it as an honor and privilege to serve the citizens of West Memphis and Creighton County. So thank you so much. And just know that we are always here. You can always count on East Arkansas for anything endeavor in this city. Thank you.
Also, we got one more individual before we move back to our meeting. Someone who has been great for our community. I remember once I was elected to office, he immediately stepped in and became our medical director. He was someone, I think, probably discovered probably the first case that we had here. And through his leadership of testing, made sure that our city employees was taken care of. He has done an awesome job. He has also been board certified in internal medicine and emergency medicine and recertified in '96, 2006, and 2016. He is also our city medical director. He's a great individual. He stay on me about a whole bunch of things outside of what we going through. And I appreciate him so much. And I had to honor him today. Dr. Hushman, I see you. Will you come forward?
Thank you, Dr. Hushman, for everything. I was trying not to let you know I want you here, but I just want to tell you, thank you.
Yeah. Well, I'm not going to the space looking at me. The hospital's mandate that I cover myself, because a lot of frontline workers are sick these days. The doctors, the nurses, so sorry for their appearance, but I have to cover myself head to toe. But thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, the city councilman, ladies and gentlemen. I'm doing my job. Mayor Marco McLennan is a great friend of mine. He asked me when he got elected to the office that they needed some directions. I accepted the city of West Memphis Medical Directorship. I'm trying my best to teach them as much as I could in the past, and I will continue to do that. In whatever ways you need me, I'm here to serve you and the community. And thank you very much. It's been such an honor to receive some recognition. And I appreciate you all. Thank you.
All right. We got a quick agenda. I'd love to get out of the meeting with you all as much as possible. Our bid openings have been table indefinitely. So can I get a motion in a second to table the bid openings?
So moved.
Second.
On favor, I. Opposed. They're our table. We had one correction to the minutes. Councilman Cat, will you get that correction and really make that?
Yes, ma'am. The minutes are correct. It's just the resolution numbers are dismissed. They don't report.
With that correction being made, can I get a motion in a second to approve?
So moved.
Second.
On favor, I. Opposed. If you all, just excuse me for one quick second, real quick. We have the old business. Ms. Muhammad, will you make a motion to read new business, oh one, by title only?
I'd be glad to do that. I'd like to make a motion that we read our new businesses, oh one and oh two, by title only.
Again, second. On favor, I. Opposed. Our city attorney?
An ordinance authorizing the issuance of Public Utility System Revenue Bonds, Series 2021, authorizing a trust indenture securing the bonds, authorizing the sale of the bonds, and the execution of a bond purchase agreement, prescribing other matters pertaining thereto, and declaring an emergency.
Can I get a motion to suspend the rules and place it on the second reading?
So moved.
Second.
On the favor, I. Opposed. Also, can I, Ms. Muhammad, could you make that same motion to read title only on the second reading as well?
The second reading, I make a motion that we read oh one by title only.
Again, second. On favor, I. Opposed.
This is an ordinance authorizing the issuance of Public Utility System Revenue Bonds, Series 2021, authorizing a trust indenture securing the bonds, authorizing the sale of the bonds, and the execution of a bond purchase agreement, prescribing other matters pertaining thereto, and declaring an emergency. prescribing other matters pertaining thereto, and declaring an emergency.
Hearing that round for the second time, I'm gonna ask for a motion in a second to suspend the rules in place on the third.
So moved.
Second.
On favor by?
Aye.
Oppose? Ms. Mohammed?
Again, we're asking that oh one be read by title only.
Again, second.
Second.
On favor by?
Aye.
Oppose? City attorney, third reading?
This is an ordinance authorizing the issuance of public utility system revenue bond, series 2021, authorizing a trust indenture securing the bonds, authorizing the sale of the bonds, and the execution of a bond purchase agreement, prescribing other matters pertaining thereto, and declaring an emergency.
I got a motion in a second to approve.
So moved.
Can I get a second?
It's not good.
End of discussion.
Mayor, can we have Todd Peterson come up and just kind of briefly explain what we're talking about here? And that this is not going to cost our citizens anything other than what they're already paying?
Yes, sir. What this is, is as y'all know, we came back to y'all a while back. The city was put under an administrative order by Arkansas Department of Environmental Quality. And we developed a corrective action plan. We, from that corrective action plan, we identified $30 million worth of improvements that we need to make to the sewer system, okay? At that time, y'all allowed me to increase water and sewer rates, which has already been passed on to the citizens and been approved by y'all. And we are now approving the bond issues that will be passed to pay for those improvements in the next few years. Again, this corrective action plan has to be completed by December 31st of 2023, these improvements to meet the guidelines of that CAO. Would you agree, Mike?
Yes, it has to be done, or else we will face substantial penalties, which would be too much.
Right. And again, the increases to address the repayment of these bonds has already been taken care of. Anything else? Any other questions?
Any other council people have any question for Todd or representatives?
So, there'll be no more rate increase, right?
Those that have, not with those that have not already been approved.
Right.
That is correct.
Thank you, Todd.
Thank you.
All right.
Hearing none, uh, city clerk, will you call the rule?
All the member Bruce?
Yes.
All the member Cat?
Yes.
All the member Croon?
Yes.
All the member Harris?
Yes.
All the member Hope?
Yes.
All the member Hutchinson?
Yes.
All the member Mohammed?
Yes.
All the member Monday? All the member Monday? All the member Murray?
Yes.
All the member Wheelis?
Yes.
That motion passes. Mr. City Clerk, will you give that ordinance a number?
That's going to be ordinance number 2585.
2585 is the number for that ordinance. Also, can I get a motion in a second to approve the emergency clause?
Section 14.
Section 14?
So moved.
Second.
On favor by?
Aye.
Oppose? It passes as well, emergency clause. Oh two, I have been asked to, by the city attorney Paul, to ask that you all table that indefinitely. And then the city attorney and Paul will work on it anew when they get it back on the agenda in the near future.
So moved.
Second.
On favor by?
Aye.
Oppose? It's been tabled. Also, I have been asked that you all will table the CSA software purchase for another additional two weeks. Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
On favor by?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, permission request. I'm going to ask for a motion in a second to add 14 South 12th Street?
So moved.
Second.
On favor by?
Aye.
Oppose? It's been added.
If I made it, we add that correction from 1810 to 1812.
Exactly. Also, yeah, 1812 from 1810 to be added, just correction into that motion.
All right.
Now, I need permission to condemn, the condemnation of 1812, 1900 East McAllen, and 14 South 12th Street.
Excuse me, ma'am. Pardon? East Barton Bar.
So moved.
I guess too many words, I'm sorry. Let me say it again. Permission for the condemnation of 1812 and 1900 East Barton.
So moved.
And 14. On favor by?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, it has been approved. Thank you, guys. Committee reports, A and P?
Yes, Mayor. A and P met on August the 18th. Minutes were presented and passed unanimously. Old Business included the warehouse. Jim Jackson informed the commission that the warehouse project was moving forward and that they decided to add space inside and outside to store the portable stage trailer. Fearless Youth Evolving, this is a group. Jim updated the commission to the group. FYE's event being postponed until September 2022. And then lastly, Big River Crossing update. The commission was updated on the Big River Park's progress from Mr. Dow McBean, and added that Ducks Unlimited has now got involved in the project. That concluded Old Business. Communication Department report was given from our communications director, Nick Holter. He informed the commission that during the I-40 bridge closure, the city's social media presence reached 1.78 million people. Announcement given for Mr. Jim. He informed the commission that the ad for the bids to do the Christmas decorations were going out. With no further business, the meeting adjourned at 4:48. And that concludes my report, sir, for A and P.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hutchinson.
Mayor, can I, can I ask Jim to come to the microphone to, I want to see what Ducks Unlimited is fixing to do over at the?
Big River.
Big River deal. Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Yes, sir. What can I?
I was asking about the Ducks Unlimited getting involved in the Big River project. And I wanted to know kind of what their plans were, because they're a big organization.
Yes, they are. And with their headquarters at the Bass Pro Pyramid, and with the influence that Mr. David Vane has, they have wanted to be involved in this project, also working with Tin Green, the conservancy group, which has, they have purchased almost 200 acres in the area of the Big River Crossing, and have all but one parcel under option of all of the 1,500 acres there in the area of the Big River Crossing. So, with Ducks Unlimited involvement, it makes things go, gives a little more legitimacy to it. Also, working with Bill Dance and the Mississippi River Monsters, who have their annual catfish, world championship catfish coming up. And I think they had one in Helena last weekend and are about to have one here in two weeks. Part of the master plan down there, too, will be to have a boat launch, which is something we don't have around here. All these boats come to town for this, specifically for this catfish contest. They have to launch at Mud Island. And I can't imagine pulling a boat and trailer and all that in downtown Memphis and having to do that. So, that's all part of that, too. So, it's all, it's, the whole concept of the Big River Crossing, I don't know if Paul's in here or not, is coming together, for sure. And again, you've got some environmental concerns, different groups involved in it. So, it's a win-win for everyone involved.
Is the 200 acres, or is it going to be a wetland? I mean, is it going to be four?
Yeah, they're going to put it back to wetlands, which is what it was, you know, before the big cut.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Any further questions? I got two more reports I need to get up. Next would be Police Department?
Yes, sir. The West Memphis Police Commission met Monday, I'm sorry, met Thursday, August 26th. And this is a scheduled, not our regular scheduled meeting, as our regular scheduled meeting will be on Labor Day holiday. Chief Pope came with very beautiful presentations during that particular meeting, which he calls the good news within the West Memphis Police Department. And I passed out to our city council members flyers that the chief and his staff got together for that presentation, which was most certainly very, very beautiful. The first thing I would like to say that Officers Winfield, Winfield, I think it is, and Shelton attended SCSO Motorcycle Unit School. The motorcycle unit will be up and going around the first of next year, 2022. Mrs. Winfield, I don't know if she's Miss or Misses, she took it up on herself to purchase a motorcycle for her training, which she did pass the test during that particular training session. Also, Officer Shelton has training in motorcycle riding as well. There will be an additional class held in Shelby County, I think maybe in September. Chief Pope correctly, if I'm wrong about any of this. I was kind of typing in a hurry when I got this together. And that class will be for free. And I'd like to say that Ms. Winfield will be the first female, whether white or black, who will be a part of this West Memphis Police Department Motorcycle Unit. And we congratulate you. Is she here? Was she the one singing today?
Yes, ma'am.
Where is she?
She's gone.
Well, let's give her an applause. Very, very brave young girl. The police department are getting, are in the process of getting estimates on Old Fire Station Number Three. And we are intending to use that as a SWAT team unit, which is Chief Pope explained as he was driving around, he saw that station there and thought it would be a prime location to be located as there is a heavy amount of crime in that area. And if you look at your flyer, you can see what the police, what that station looks like now and what it is to look like after it's been completed. And it looks very, very good. It has on there West Memphis SWAT, and it looks really good. I think they're waiting for a few estimates as far as mold, checking that out, as far as getting new air conditioning units, things of that nature. And I applaud you, Chief Pope, for all of your efforts. Also, new uniforms are being purchased for the police department officers as well as for our crossing guards. These materials used to make the uniform, the material used to make these uniforms more breathable and lighter, making them more comfortable for our officers and for our crossing guards to wear. Chief Pope brought examples or samples of the uniforms for the commissioners to review. And they were so much better in quality than the ones that they're wearing now. And I think our officers will be most certainly more comfortable and will enjoy wearing those a lot more. The police department will have 10 recruits in the 2021 class, starting, I think he said, in September. And these recruits will be from Marion, Crittenden County, and the Crittenden County Sheriff's Department, as well as West Memphis Police Department. Three officers, I'm going to refer to my pamphlet now. And there are pictures of the recruits, of West Memphis recruits, in the pamphlet. Officers Kristen Kuns, is that right, Kuns? DeClary Davis and Amber Kimbrough completed 40 hours of basic training, resource training. Completed 40 hours basic school recourse, resource training. And that was held in Springdale, Arkansas. Officers Kevin Jordan and Jessica Anderson completed 40 hours of basic hostage negotiation training that was in Little Rock, Arkansas. Officers Nicholas Anderson, Chad Davis, Brianna Porter, and Moses Walker will attend 40 hours of detective level one training, and that will be held in South Haven, Mississippi. We have pictures of Officer Winfield and Officer Presley standing where they went to this particular class. And we had a video of that, which is very, very beautiful. I just enjoyed watching it. I always enjoy everything that Chief Pope and his staff bring forward, because it's always so precise and detailed. Just enjoyed that so much. The West Memphis Department, West Memphis Police Department, they're also getting a forensic unit. And this unit will be for FOIA, BO with the drone units, different things of that nature. They've already put a posting of that on our website for people to apply for that administrative position. West Memphis Police Department has hired three new dispatchers, which brings it up to a total of eight as of now. Chief Pope has developed an apprehension list. He said all of the perpetrators who commit heinous crimes, he's going to have them on a list. Once apprehended, so far as Don Suggs, Keon Robinson, Kirk Patrick Johnson, and David Jackson. Let me look at my notes to make sure I got everything, as I should have gotten. There was a lot of heavy discussion during that particular meeting. And for further information, we do have a recording of everything that was said verbatimly. If you want to listen to everything, we're able, thanks to the city of West Memphis, we do have our very own tape recorders that we can upload to the city clerk's office. And if you want to just hear the entire meeting, you can just go and request that from the city clerk's office. And that ends my report.
Thank you, Ms. Mohammed. Also, finally, I'm going to ask, I know some of you all may have asked about the budget and the bonds. I'm going to ask the city treasurer if you would kind of give us a clear picture, if you got questions for the budget or anything with the Beverly Bonds for him? He get the answers for you? Councilman Croon, do you have?
I think, well, I think that in the pre-council meeting break, Councilor Cat and the treasurer, both, we were talking about it. And it's available on the website. So, I mean, we could go on the website and look at it, but periodically, it would be okay to get a printed copy of it, you know?
Can we get one printed out?
Excuse me?
Can we have one printed out?
Sure.
I would like to see one printed out.
But that wasn't the only concern I've heard is the fact that we don't see the budget enough. And now, it's clear that we could see it as many times as we want to.
City Clerk, did you need to add something?
Yeah, I would, I'd like to add something to that. The only thing that I would like to add to that is, one of the things that, you know, my concern, which is not, hadn't just happened, so, but for is, like when the article was here, he and I, we had a conversation. We talked about the clerk's and the treasurer's duty. Of course, you know, that state law reads that the clerk shall, each month, same as the treasurer, we give full of reports, you know, detailing receipts and everything. So, my only thing that I'm saying, if, of course, I know we pretty much like a month or two behind, and I know everyone said, well, when the, we get the new system up, we should be able to get them. And what concerns me is the fact that, like the articles say, as long as no one have asked for it, it's all good. But the minute someone asks for it, that's when the trouble start. So, my whole thing is, and I feel like this, if we're not able to get it up, in other words, be able to supply the information now, at least we can contract it out until we able to do so. That's my main concern. And the reason I'm saying it is because, I mean, if someone come and ask for it, and the law say we're supposed to give it to them, I mean, we could be deemed non-feasors of office. Am I right? And so, that's what I'm trying to avoid. It's not trying to put pressure on anybody to do anything other than, it's just the fact that I know what can happen. Like I say, everything is okay, as long as nobody ever, you know, came up and asked the question. And so, I'm just trying to protect my interest. I'm quite sure the treasurer want to protect his interest. So, I'm just saying if we can't get it out, and I know even when we get the new software, you're going to have bugs, and it's got to work itself out. But I'm just putting it to this council, you know? And I want it to be on record. Hey, if we can't get it, we need to contract it out until we can get the information that we're supposed to supply to you.
Thank you, City Clerk.
Thank you. Before we go anywhere, we talked about the 32 million. I was wondering if I could ask the city treasurer to kind of give us some specifics on the financing for that before we adjourn today?
Sure. Sure.
If there's anything Todd would like to add. We wound up with the 2.453 interest rate on these bonds, which was lower than what we intended, so we got more borrowing, you know, better deal with that right there. We'll be paying an annual of about 1.46 million, which is 120,000 a month, that we're, you know, it's going to average over the years, which wound up even better than it did before. And like I said, our first payment's not due until June, and everything that we've reviewed, everything aspect of this turned out better than what we anticipated in the beginning. So, there was nothing that shocked us, nothing that we weren't, you know, prepared for. So, everything, I don't have any issues, and I don't think anybody that represents the city like Todd has any issues with this. It was all real good, it turned out better than what, what it was intended to be.
Yeah, just again, when we originally started talking about this, when we were talking about doing a $30 million bond issue, we were originally thinking that we're going to have about a $1.6 million per year payment. But because of the lower interest rates right now, where they are so low, we've hit this at a real good time, being able to borrow power, borrow money at such a low rate. So, that's why we're now, on average, about 1.46 million per year. So, again, rates are really good, we picked a great time to be borrowing some money, and starting to do these improvements that needed to be done years and years and years ago. So, this will help the city as a whole as we start to do these with, as y'all know, when we get a lot of rain, we have backflows and issues within our sewer system. But this is not the end, this is just the start of getting us in compliance. We've got to start fixing all the issues that have been kicked down the road for years and years as we go forward. But yeah, with the bond issue, I'm very happy with what Stevens and the Friday firm did. They helped us greatly, and we're able to get a better rate than what we even anticipated. The bonds, if for some reason something happens, we get, you know, a huge infrastructure where it will be able to pay these back after seven years, so, we do, but we have to have them for at least a minimum of seven years.
And the money that we've already spent, because our timeframe of doing this project is so short, the money we've already spent, we will be reimbursed, so it could go, you know?
Again, if you remember, I think September of 2019, y'all passed a resolution to allow me to recoup that money, so that's going to help us drastically, because last year we did spend in 2020, $3 million on projects that we spent out of reserves. And we have been continuing to work on these as we're going forward and getting this project done, and we'll be able to recoup that money by repayment.
Could you, could you tell us when, when this all should start, the repair works starts up?
Okay. The repair work is already started. We've actually been doing manhole rehabs on the east side of town that we've been working on. One of the first things we had to do was, we had to upgrade a pump station down at the very end of South Avalon. That project just finished up also. The project that y'all just removed, which was laying of a force main, which, from Station Three and Station Four, which is the station behind Walmart and the station by Lear, we've delayed that because PVC pipe prices have almost doubled. We were originally estimated that project at about 1.6 million, and we were looking at numbers at about 4 million because of what pipe prices, and actually, they could only even give us a seven-day timeframe on our, on the pricing of the pipe. So, we're going to wait until after the winter. What we hope is supposedly there's a shortage of resin to make PVC pipe. Once everybody stops all the construction during winter, they should be able to catch up, and those prices will hopefully fall, or then, first thing in the spring, we'll then rebid that. The design portion of the wastewater treatment plant upgrade has actually been going on, and we've been paying for that already, the engineering. We hope to be submitting plans to ADQ in September, by the end of this month, for approval of our upgrades. That will take probably six to nine months for them to review those drawings and then get back with us. So, then we'll be bidding out that design. Remember, that is taking our wastewater treatment plant from having a capacity of 6.3 million gallons per day to 12 million gallons per day, okay? And then a short timeframe capacity of 18 million gallons per day. And the other project we have that we will be looking at is the pump station at the very end of South Monroe, running a force main from it directly to the wastewater treatment plant. So, all these projects that we've committed to, again, December 31st, 2023. I need them done by then unless I get permission, unless something special happens. But I'm, I see Mike shaking his head, and I agree with Mike. I do not want to ask for permission, I want to get these projects done with all possible, because I want to be able to go back to ADQ and say, we've completed it, and we've, and to get out of the administrative order, so we do not incur any penalties, financial penalties.
All the projects I've worked on, everything just fell together on this perfect, all the hard work everybody done in research, everything turned out better than what I anticipated.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
All right. About two quick announcements, this month is National Preparedness Month, dealing with natural disasters, direct roles, if you want to speak a little bit on that or just update
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Yes, National Preparedness Month is September, and it is a recognized month for you to go back and start just bringing your plans back out. If you haven't developed any plans, it's a good time to go ahead and start. Emergency strike at any day, at any time, and a lot of times, we, we're not prepared, you know? And I say we're not prepared, I'm talking about from a civilian standpoint. You know, do you have non-perishable food items in your, in your plan? Do you have enough medicine to get you to, you know, three or four days? You know, things like that. Where are your pets going to go? Where are you going to evacuate to? And we just said on the New Madrid Fault, I think all of us know that, and so, we're, we sit in a very peculiar area for an emergency to happen here at any time, that could be very devastating to our area. So, I would encourage you all just to, you know, look into the national preparedness, ready.gov, has a lot of information about being prepared. Obviously, I'm a cheerleader for being prepared every day, so I think that we all need to keep that in mind, not just one month out of the year, get that stuff out, but just make sure that it's all updated all the time. Anybody have any questions? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Nick, can you pull this, I want to go back to something with Councilman Croon that I told you about, the idea that I had in mind. Can you pull that up on the screen? You know, the property that we tore down, the Old Depot, most likely is no business going to be without a train coming right down the street. So, what I did, I looked at the head, this design, and I came up with some ideas of saying, how can we pay for it without us paying for it? So, actually, Paul Luca worked out something with Jackie Dixon that would sign the property over to us. Stephen Barris, how so graciously donated the fencing to make sure you can't drop on the street and a kid run up on the track. So, Stephen Barris donated the fence to the city of West Memphis. I talked with Todd yesterday, and he said utility would take care of all the utilities and lighting for this area. I talked with Ms. Deborah Abernathy, and she agreed the Main Street will buy two of the digital boards that will help explain some of our music culture and history and different things, so Main Street will pay for that. I spoke also with Jim Jackson, on the canopies on the top part, A&amp;P will purchase that for us. Michael Bunnell with our street department, they will prepare the concrete foaming. I got a meeting with Razorback and Hedger Brothers tomorrow on donating the concrete for this project. So, this project outside of the concrete, if they don't give it, but if they donate it, that project actually costs the city of West Memphis $0, and it turn a ice cellar into a main attraction.
What is it, what is it going to be called, the Blues Depot?
It's going to be called West Memphis Blues Depot. What we took was our rich music history, as well as the Train Depot, and just put together, just said, West Memphis Blues Depot, and we can sell the food trucks, and they can be out there, people don't learn, and they can learn about our rich music history and things within our city. I also talked to Ms. Deborah Abernathy about moving the guitar and the benches with K-Wam to that area, so it really doesn't cost us anything, so, and that's for that area and then, but on the 108th Street, definitely, I'm trying to get a business there because I want to get more people back on.
And I think that's a good thing, Mayor. And again, I think if some of the citizens here go online and take a look and look at the history of West Memphis, I'm not going to just go on all the way back when it used to be Hope Field, you know, that, that way. Of course, where we're sitting is West Memphis, but West Memphis used to extend out Mountain City Road before they actually moved it this way. So, it's interesting to go online and just read up on it, and you can really learn something about our history, especially on the blues, you know? But I just think it's a good thing, you know, to even come up with that idea.
And the last thing I have, last councilman I talked to you all about, we had some money from the American Rescue Act, and some of that money had to go towards COVID projects. You all know that we've been paying people rent, who's been behind, light bill, food, different things like that for people who are needed in this month. Some of this month specifically has to be used for COVID, so it ain't nothing right now, you can say, well, I'm going to go use the building or something like that. And what I was asking to do was the city council to approve me to use, to give our city employees and our elected officials a $200 incentive for getting COVID vaccinated. Now, we know that majority of our, not majority, a large part of our city employees have not been vaccinated yet. And what I want to do, I want to award you all for getting the vaccination, as well as the ones who haven't got the vaccination to help to promote, to get the vaccination. But also, for the ones who haven't got it, hope that would encourage them to go out and get it, because, you know, we know this strain is very stronger than the first Alpha virus, and we just want to make sure, and certain things that we have, like last year, we had plans where you had to be off two weeks, you got paid. We don't have them programmed right now. So, for the ones who were responsible and took, done the responsible thing to make sure that they were safe and taken care of, we want to award them, but that entire project would run 80,000 if that was everybody, where a large part of our city employees are not vaccinated. I hope to get them vaccinated, but if they don't, we just want to make sure we encourage them to, and it's no, we can't use some money for nothing else, so that's what I'm saying. It's not, it's not in the budget. This is the 6.6 million that we got from the federal government. So, certain parts of this money, we have to do some COVID-related, but we can't use for anything else. And a lot of cities, a lot of schools and districts are doing this, and some incentivize their, us to get vaccinated, and I just want to reward you guys, because like I said, you all see men of the constituents, and you may be able to persuade them, as well as our city employees, maybe able to persuade our other city employees, because can you imagine going two weeks without trash being picked up like it was the last time? Or you call an ambulance and paramedics sick, or a police, and the police can't get there because they're short? So, I'm just asking for this, and this is what the money is to be used for, ideas like this.
Mayor.
Go ahead.
I think it's a great idea, but I would like to see more money. You know, we can't give raises, but I would like to see more money given to the employees. I think the council members, maybe it should be without, maybe the council members shouldn't get, you know, you talked about $200, okay? But for, for council members and the employees, but I think it should go to the employees. I would like to see how much money we did get in the CARES Act, but I know as a school employee, the bonuses, like you talked about $200, but why not 500 to 1,000? Because there is a lot of money, and this would go a long ways in helping our employees here in the city. And I think frontline, frontline employees, we're elected officials. Frontline employees should get, they should get that money. I really and truly believe that.
I, I don't disagree with you, but it is, and I wish Trevor was here, the money is divided between certain portions, so you can, if, if you gave every city employee $1,000, which I would love to, that's almost 400 and some thousand dollars that's not allocated that much, because only 10% of the pot.
She did send it out for the one that have the city email. She did send that brochure, you know, letting you know what, what it can be used for, you know? So, if you have a city email, you got it, because she did send it out.
But I, I think, you know, I know what school employees got, so I know 500 to 1,000 is affordable, and I think it would be good for the employees.
And like I said, I understand, Dr. Bruce, no problem. If I, if I knew we had it in our budget, I understand you, you bet for me what school did, but ours is a little different, we don't have that amount of money. And actually, I had to fight with Tori, because she is the finance director, to get it up to this level, and it's not a premium, it's just an incentive, and with that rescue money, that is what it's being used for.
But, I mean, the CARES Act, the money, like you said, the money could be used for, there are certain things on that the money can be used for, and bonuses is one of them. And I don't know what the city has spent money on, but I think it would be great for our employees to receive a 5 to 1,000.
Let me say this, my employees here, I'm not debating with you about that.
Okay.
But what I need you to understand is that we don't have $1,000, because we, that our portion, to give the incentive of that money, is not 400,000. If we have all 400 employees, and you give them $1,000, they come up to about 470,000. We don't have, we don't have the money to do that.
Okay, and I'm not debating with you, but I'm just saying, okay, is it a way that we as a council could get a copy of that and just see how?
It's already there, and, and the way that you can use it. City Treasurer, you want to speak more on that a little bit?
Can I say one thing? Can I say one thing real quick? Only thing, that's what I was, I mean, you know, asking this request out, but of course, if you don't have a city email, you didn't get it, because I don't think you got a copy of it. But at the same time, that's what I was thinking about, sitting down and have a working session, you know, so therefore, everybody has the same understanding as to which way you're trying to go with this. And like I say, just like Fores' recommendation, at the same time, at least you'll know what you can do, what you can't do. But she did send it, because I requested it, she did send it, so if you got to see the email, you go on there, look, you'll see it, but I think the whole council needs to sit down and have a working session on it. I mean, that's just my thought.
I agree. Nobody in this room doesn't want employees to have more money. There's no one in here that does. But like he was talking, it started off for an incentive to make sure you got, got vaccinated. Now, that's what we're trying to get through.
Yeah, that's, that's the goal.
It's just to cover the employees that we have.
I think the meaning of the man would make it work.
You know, we have infrastructure in there, we're looking at trying to get internet to support them, for us, there's a whole bunch of things that the federal government said.
This is a common practice, even the state police do this.
Well, I agree with that, but what I'm saying is, school districts have the same employees, infrastructure, internet, different things. So...
But we can look into it, we need to, we need to get a meeting.
I think we do need to sit down and look at it.
I think we all do.
As a, as a, as a council.
And Dr. Bruce, I, they have rescue, the municipal league has rescue plan training about every, I don't know, week or two. They haven't had it recently because there weren't a lot of changes by the federal government about some of the new regulations, but they put out a email where you can join this rescue plan training. I think, I don't know if Tori's been doing it every time, I haven't been able to always do it, but it tells you, or they're trying to figure out what you can and can't use that money for. They're still trying to figure it out.
And if you miss that, you will pay a fine.
But, but my point is, let's sit down as a group and look at it. That's, that's the whole point.
I agree. The council currently has a procedure, as far as how you want to spend the budget money is at the end of the first quarter of each year. Once the year has been completed, all Once the year has been completed, all the year-end transactions have been posted. So administration can document, this is how we finish for the year. And if it's a certain amount, you would make decisions on giving a bonus on that. Now, this program, I read through the guidelines rather quickly the first time. I was gonna get into them in more detail. But they are very specific. And if you get out of line, then you'll just have to repay. And then as city attorneys stated, they still have questions they cannot answer. So I don't think any city is gonna want to wander off into gray area at this time to do something.
I understand all of that. But have we as a council sat down or have we gotten the information? As a council to sit down and look at? Well, I have not been a part of it.
Again, that decision by, I believe it's by resolution now, is that's made at the end of the first quarter, once the year has been completed and all the postings have been made. It's very, very difficult for the council to just say, okay, we're gonna give 800,000 dollars with the bonuses when you still haven't finished this year. Now, last year's numbers, again with COVID and everything else, were rather tight. We were truly hoping this year COVID was behind us. We were truly hoping that the bridge hadn't have been shut down. You know, we were truly hoping Southland didn't lose its revenue. So once all those postings are done, then yes, they will be given all that data to make a decision so they can move forward.
But that goes back to, okay, just talking about the budget.
Yes.
We can't make a decision if we have not seen the budget.
The budget is posted every month online. Now, again, the one that's on there right now is through May. I've got the trial balance report, I received it about a week ago. I've got to finish entering all that data into that spreadsheet that I've been giving everybody for years now. Tori will get that posted online, which will get you through June. My last conversation with Tori is she thought she would have the July data by the 10th or the 11th of the month so I can get that entered and get it to you.
But now Trace, I'm gonna say this, I served on the council with you before. Now, was the council not given a copy of the budget? I've sit, I've sat here and watched it go back and forth about the budget. We received a packet, the budget.
You received a printout that Frank Martin used to give.
Have not seen, received one since I've been here. I shouldn't have to look online, that's not, I shouldn't have to do that.
We're trying to get away from printing mounds of printouts, it's just online, you can go look at it.
You let me get that, you let me get you printed one.
Some people, some people learn differently. So, so when you got something that you can look at, some people have to touch it, feel it, some people can see it. So, I mean, you should go ahead and give everybody one.
Personally, I don't want one.
Well, that's fine, but I'm just saying, I'm just speaking for, I can only speak for myself. But I've sat here today and seen them go back and forth. And there's no reason that we should have, you said, well, you need to go and look online. I don't work for the city, I'm a, I'm an elected official. If we're asked for something, we should be able to get it.
We'll give any council member anything they ask.
Dr. Bruce, I agree 100%. And I have to have the printout in paper also. But really, we just need to get our books caught up. When we're stopped, when the last time we had books was May, that doesn't tell me anything, even being your current chair.
I'm, I'm not sure why they're not caught up.
We need to get them caught up, we need to print out every month and we need, you need to let me set up and preach every month of the standings of the city. And that's what we're trying to get to at this point.
Well, let me, let me add this question. Excuse me. I don't want to get the budget mixed up with what I was talking about. Now, you all decided, you all will hold off on it, well, that's fine. But I don't want the people to see this meeting and think we talking about the budget and what I was asking for the city employees. Like I got with all my department heads, we talked about this and we thought it would be good for the city. And I did what I supposed to do, brought it to the body. I knew that. And like I said, we can give our employees 1,500 dollars, I would love to. But I know it's not realistic with what we have regardless of what the school and anyone else may have. Because I know the guidelines and I've been on the meetings with Tori and Kenneth to see how we can divide this money up. And it's only 10% that we can use with different funds like this. So if you all want, want to make a motion to give it or you want to do something different, it's up to you. I just brought it forward to you.
I'm not against giving it and I, I agree with what you're saying, have no problem with it. But I am going to say that there is no reason that we, it's going back, just like I said about the budget, okay? Why we don't have information on how much money was given? That's all I'm saying. We should be able to see that as well.
Dr. Bruce, like I said once again, I'm not against you all seeing it and you would not deny it. Many of you all have saw it. My, my issue, when I'm just saying that I knew what the money due to my staff have shown me and on the, on the internet with the municipal league of what we gather and how much we can use the percentages of that. And it's been available for every council member. Only saying that whether or not you gather it or not, my thing, I just don't want to get mixed up with our city budget and this money. Because I know someone gonna pop up after, after this meeting and say, well, Dr. Bruce said, well, you could have gave us a thousand dollars. It's no, you didn't understand what he, what he saying. And I wanted to make sure that that's clear. What I was just talking about was this rescue money that we get and it's certain amount of money that we can do. Because these things that is broke down on for us giving these incentives for our employees and the money is for incentive.
I, I, I'm in agreement with you. I'm just saying, all I ask is, is that the council members be giving that as well, that information as well. That's, that's it.
I think that.
Well, I'm, I'm totally agree with, with you. If we were a board, if this was the company and we were the board and the chairman never showed us a budget, the board would say either show it to us or we're gonna find someone that can.
See, I said, we get, we get all the way out there. No, no, we get off the point because you said talking about the budget. We not talking about the budget. What I'm talking about is the money that we got. Let's don't mislead the people. Let's don't do that. We just talking about the incentive money on the CARES money. So that ain't what we talking about, not the budget. And whatever this council need, I will give you and make sure you have it, that's no problem. I was just asking all that money that was given from the federal government, that all, that all of the entitlement cities around Arthur's Hall gathered had nothing to do with the budget itself. That's all I'm just saying.
I make a motion that we give that.
I would like to make a motion that we give the $200 based on the findings that you have, your studying and that the, that the treasurers and everyone has talked about, that we give our city employees a $200 incentive to get the shots even if they don't get it. I'd like to make that motion.
I second it.
Oh, you say if they haven't got it?
Even if they have not gotten the shot, you're giving the $200 as an incentive.
What I'm asking, to give $200 to the incentive employees who have gotten it? And if a city employee who haven't got it, go get it. And then once they provide their card, then they'll get their $200.
Okay.
Okay, so say that again, so she make sure.
I said, what I'm asking you all is to give the $200 to our city employees who have already got the vaccination. And for any employee who hasn't, that goes get fully vaccinated, then we give them the $200.
They'll have to show their card in order to get the $200.
He made the motion, I second it.
So all city employees been vaccinated?
No, we trying, we trying to get them vaccinated.
You got it.
They're trying to get the motion so then you can do this discussion.
I would like to make a motion that the city employees who have gotten their vaccination, present a card to get the $200. And those employees or, or the elected officials, once they get the shot, present the card, will then get the $200.
I second it.
Any further discussion?
Mayor, may I just quickly? I thought we had already discussed this $200.
Last meeting, we didn't vote on it.
But I think we're actually talking about two different things here. This, we actually started talking about the budget at the beginning and then it got off on this, on this care money. So we got a, we got a motion on the floor. And then when we get through that motion on the floor, I'd like to make another motion about.
Yeah, the second.
Dr. Bruce second. Let me, if you have no more question about this.
No, I don't have any more questions about it.
Okay, could, could you call the roll?
I will, all right, okay. All of member, all of member Bruce?
Yes.
All of member Kat?
Yes.
All of member Kroom?
Yes.
All of member Harris?
Accent.
All of member Harris? All of member Hope?
Yes.
All of member Hudson? Okay, all of member Mohammed?
Yes.
All of member Monday? All of member Murray?
Yes.
All of member Wheeler?
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, six.
That motion passed, I thank you all on that part of it. And Mr. Kroom?
Yeah, I was, I was saying that we started, we've been, we started this conversation up talking about a budget, that we could see a budget, okay? And then we got into this CARES Act money.
He started it first, about the CARES Act.
It was the CARES Act first and then the budget just was incorporated into it.
Okay, so I would like to propose, I would like to propose that as soon as our treasurer and our budget chair has the first opportunity to run us a budget in paper. Then we do that and we do it every month after that.
I second that.
Well, let me, let me say, even though we got the second, I make sure Tori, if Tori here tomorrow, if she not here tomorrow, I think she's on vacation today. But if she here Monday, I get that written. And like I said, we've been sending it out digitally, that's why I bought everybody a laptop. But if Monday, I get everyone a hard copies to up to date to where we at, where we at color code. And we get that done. That's why, like I said, that's why it's so important that we do get this new system. So I can, you have real town numbers. Because when you get that, it's not gonna be all the way up to September 6th. But I will get you what we have by Monday and have 10, I have 12 copies. And everyone can have it and we'll go for that.
Well, we got the, the motion was on.
There's no, there's no motion for that. We don't need a motion for that.
I, I get that, I promise you, we ain't trying to hide nothing.
Okay. I, I have, are we finished with that? Because I had one more thing and my school bell is about to ring, so I got to go.
Go ahead.
I would like to give a thousand dollars of my charity money to the 15th Street Church of God in Christ. Do I need to?
Can I get a second?
Second.
All of member, I oppose.
I'd like to make a motion that we place it on the, if I have to make a motion to place it on the agenda, that I give $1,000 of my charitable donation to the 15th Street Church of God in Christ. I'm making that motion to add that to the agenda.
And I second it.
Who's, who's second, Councilman Kroom? All of member, I oppose. It's an addition agenda. Now, gonna give the motion for you, sir. Just, just make the motion for the.
I'd like to make a motion to give $1,000 of my charitable donation to the 15th Street Church of God in Christ.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Mr. Kroom, second. In discussion, here and now, all of member, I oppose. Wow. Join me, can I get a motion second, join?
So moved.
For the audience can wake up on me.